And then over to yourself, Chair. Okay, good, right. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Covid member engagement board. We've got a different afternoon today in that we've got a meeting that has been been streamed. So anyone of the public can can see it. But we only have ourselves as board members asking questions like that because obviously we can't take questions from a public basis. So welcome, everybody, and we'll make a start. I have apologies from Steve Maxie. Is anybody aware of any other apologies?
Chair, if I may, I've just seen on the on the attendance list an apology from Andy Hardy as well.
Yes, he's on his new new role. Would you like just to explain all how this meeting is working today?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so usual board meeting for members, usual sort of arrangements as far as hands up to speak, etc. The addition, because we're in public today, the documents have been published online. There has been the opportunity for some questions to be submitted, which have been circulated to officers ahead of the meeting. The public session will be live streamed and then, Chair, when we get to a convenient point, we'll stop that live stream so members can have their usual engagement board meeting in private afterwards, as would be the case. It's a composite presentation, which I know Sade will start with. There'll be suitable pauses because it covers a number of themes and strands today, and they'll naturally then fit with the agenda. So I'm sure officers will explain when we get to the appropriate pause. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Are we all okay with that? Yes, guys, thank you very much. So welcome, Sade, and can I ask you to kick off your presentation, the current situation in Warwickshire?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Paul, are you going to share your share screen or share the presentation or?
All in hand. Catherine is very kindly offered to do it.
So there we go. Sup, Sade?
Fantastic. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to start off today. It's lovely to have everybody here. I'll start off by describing the current situation in Warwickshire. Next slide, please, Catherine. Yeah, so I will be talking about what's currently happening, which I'm sure most people are probably aware of at the moment. I'll be reflecting on some of the learning till date and talk briefly about what we are planning to do as we go into the next phase of this pandemic. There's been also talk in the media about whether or not we are seeing a second wave or not, but I'll talk about that later on. So in Warwickshire today, as of today, the total number of cases is at 2,837, so that's 2,837 cumulatively since we started to collate numbers. We have recorded 79 cases in the last seven days, and our current rate per 100,000 people is 13.67. So to put this in context, Solihull's seven-day rate is currently 52.2 and Coventry is currently 22.8. The West Midlands' risk per 100,000 people is 29.4. So we remain one of the areas in the region with the one of the lowest numbers of cases. But we are seeing an increase in numbers and similar to the national pattern, we are seeing an increase amongst younger people. Across our districts and boroughs is a mixed picture, so we are seeing the highest rates currently being recorded in rugby. Today's rugby's rate is 23.8 per 100,000 people. This is closely followed by North Warwickshire at 13.79, Neneaton at 10, Stratford at 12, and Warwick at 10.4. We continue to deploy mobile testing across five sites in our county, and the mobile testing unit is currently at rugby and will be there till Saturday. We are seeing an increase, like I said, being observed in younger people, and we have seen an increase in single cases in the range of pubs and within schools in the last one week. We have established a response team who are doing some fantastic work with our pubs and baths and providing information, advice and support as needed. Our schools also continue to do the right thing and are really quick to inform us and isolate all close contacts of any positive cases. So moving on to reflecting briefly on where we are at the moment, it shows that what we're seeing now is not entirely unexpected. So children went back to schools last week, pubs are open, non-essential businesses are open, so a rise in numbers is not surprising. But what is obvious is an emerging trend that suggests that people are no longer adhering to the principles of social distancing, the requirements to keep two metres apart at all times when possible, and the washing of hands and sanitising regularly. It feels as if there's some messaging fatigue setting in and people are no longer adhering to all of these requirements. We are seeing some unacceptable behaviour in younger age groups, especially when they congregate in pubs and some lack of cooperation from some establishments with the contact tracing process. So as a result of all of this, we are starting to look into messaging that is slightly more firm, that is firmer and more hard-hitting if we can than that which has still did relied on people's social consciences. So in moving towards the next phase of this pandemic, we're obviously factoring in flu season coming in as well and working with NHS partners to ensure that everyone who is eligible for the flu vaccine gets it. This year, everyone who lives with someone in a shielded category will be asked to get a flu vaccine, and we are slowly building our response team. I've mentioned that already. We currently have in place four environmental health colleagues working with us to support businesses. We've also started to do enhanced backward contact tracing to try and understand where people might have gotten the infection from for some of the cases that are being reported within specific settings. Next slide, please, Catherine. Okay, so that's the outbreak control plan. Yeah, so I'll quickly talk about that. You'll probably all recall that we had an outbreak control plan that was published on the 30th of June and describes how we respond to the pandemic and tackle outbreaks with a focus on eight key priority areas. We continue to work really hard to the principles set out in the plan to tackle care home outbreaks, support vulnerable people and carry out contact tracing. So I won't go into too much detail about each priority and some of the work that we've been doing. But I think it's worth mentioning the work that we've done till date in relation to the first priority around community engagement. So what we've done is established a community engagement work stream that is led by one of our consultants in public health. The work stream has included a wide range of partners, including districts and borough council representatives, Health Watch, Equip and Citizens Advice, to mention just a few. We've put aside some money from the Test and Trace Grant to support some of this activity. And I'm happy to report that we've already had a number of bids and proposals submitted and approved to increase reach into and engagement with priority audiences. The work stream has also supported the production of short videos that's been developed by Equip and Warwickshire County Council COMS to provide messages on test and trace in languages other than English. And some of this has been published on our staysafe.info microsite. Next slide. That just describes the governance arrangements of our outbreak control plan. As you're all aware, we are a beacon, so we're working to our outbreak control plan jointly with Coventry and Solihull. So we have a beacon-wide governance structure in place that is led and directed by a CSW advisory board that has the three leaders of the three local authorities on it, Monica Fogarty as Chief Exec of Warwickshire County Council, myself and Chris Hamm representing the NHS. And we meet every two weeks. The next meeting is on Friday. Locally, we all have different governance arrangements. The Coventry has got a slightly different structure to Solihull, similar to Warwickshire. But we all have a member engagement board, which is what we are having today, and a local Covid health protection board, which is chaired by myself, and different work streams that sit underneath this main boards. Next slide. So till date, some of the actions that we've done till date very quickly, you are all, you've all probably seen the Let's Do It For Warwickshire campaign. We started a conversation this morning in response to the increasing numbers that we're seeing in rugby around personal tailoring the campaign to rugby. So we've had the Let's Do It For Neneaton campaign. We're going to be launching the Let's Do It For Rugby campaign today. We continue to use data and intelligence to drive local action. So some of the problems we had at the start of this pandemic was a lack of access to data. We didn't know what was happening in the community in some cases. We now have good access to data. We know what's happening. We're able to very quickly monitor changes in trends and numbers and respond accordingly. So, for example, in relation to what's happening in rugby, apart from the COMS element, boosting the COMS to rugby, doing that tailored campaign, the mobile testing unit is in rugby. We're exploring keeping it there for longer. And we've started a conversation and have indeed received approval to have a local testing site established in rugby as well. So all of this is made possible because we now have access to good, high-quality data. I've already talked about the community engagement programme and work stream and work streams. We've also established a range of work streams to support different settings. So we have an educational work stream, care homes are being supported as well. All of this are led by the different consultants in public health working with wider partners within the local authority and wider stakeholders as well. We continue to manage outbreaks as and when they occur in different settings, and we have deployed additional testing capacity. So we have commissioned jointly with Coventry a new testing service. The main purpose of this service, using some of the funds from the Test and Trace monies, is to provide support during outbreaks and to support home testing for for people that might be vulnerable or might not be able to travel to a testing site for one reason or the other. We've also built capacity in the team. So again, if you recall, we were given a slice of the £300 million Test and Trace money, Warwickshire got about £2.1 million. We have used some of that money to recruit additional capacity, 12 new posts. I've mentioned the four environmental health officers that have been recruited. We have interviews that are coming up in the next week or so to build the team. And hopefully that should build up, that should beef up our capacity and help us to respond in a timely fashion manner. Next slide, please. Okay, lots of this is probably repetition. I've talked about deployment till date. Perhaps useful to mention is some of the local learning that has come out from the start. There's been learning about the importance of proactive communication and engagement at the start of this. We didn't always get it right. We probably are not used now used to making sure that we inform the right people, range of partners, including members, councillors, NHS colleagues and sometimes even members of the public. So we've learned from that and we've adjusted our protocols accordingly. We've also learned the importance of having real-time up-to-date data to inform our response. Some challenges remain, especially in relation to contact tracing, as we simply do not have the resources and capabilities to do the sort of large-scale contact tracing that may be required for large outbreaks and for single cases with, for example, dozens of contacts, which is what we're seeing in the last couple of days. So single cases that have been recorded in some of the pubs, where there have been cases across the county, many of them have up to a dozen or more contacts. So one case, positive case, has up to 19 contacts, in some cases even. We simply don't have that sort of resource, and we continue to lobby for additional resource and continue to do the best we can really within the context of what we have, within the context of existing capacity. Next slide, Catherine. Oh, that's it from me then. All right. Thank you.
Can we just, is any questions for Sade at this point, anyone? If so, can you indicate? Julie?
Yes, Jan, hoping you can hear me. A very good presentation, Sade, but can I ask, in the news today, we're hearing of real difficulties in slots for testing in some parts of the country. From what you've said, it would appear that that is a problem in Warwickshire.
Yes, we've had reports that people are unable to book, and indeed I have had a number of emails coming today. Phone calls have been received by some members of my team expressing real difficulty and challenges that they face trying to book. Some people have been sent really, really far away, distances away from home. This is a national problem. The national team are aware, we've escalated it, and the feedback is that this is a problem that is likely to continue for the next one or two weeks. What we're now encouraging people to do is that they get a test if they have symptoms so that the system is not clogged up by people that are asymptomatic or just wanting a test. But it is a national problem, and we've been assured that they're looking into it.
Okay, Julie.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jo?
Hi, thanks, Sade. I'm concerned, really concerned, about the the lack of communication between PHE and us. And you'll know why I'm saying this, Sade, because I gave you a tip-off, which I suspect has now come home to roost in Stratford. Basically, when we when we had an exceedance locally, it was a very, a few weeks ago, it was very small and it meant that we had a dry run. And so I raised another one with Sade, kind of not the same thing, but something I'd heard anecdotally. I thought we'd try a dry one of what actually happened. Well, nothing seems to happen is my real worry that we're pretty good at what we're doing, but we're stretched. I include all of us here in that. But the link with us and PHE and what's actually happening with people who've been tested with a in pillar one rather than pillar two, really, really, I'm seriously concerned about the lag. Do we think that, you know, we're looking at the next two weeks, things will improve? But by that time, if we genuinely are trying to stop this going any further, well, we will have lost control. And I don't want to see another lockdown. I just, I'd quite like to see people who are vulnerable staying at home and being looked after properly and the rest of us getting on with it, but that's not happening because then we see people, we see kids sent home from school and all sorts of things like that. So I am, I'm just worried that the communication lag is what's actually causing the problem, not the disease.
There's probably, yeah, there is probably an element of that happening. So we've had this conversation back and forth about how we get notifications and how much of these notifications come directly from PHE. Until date has been a mixed bag. So some of the, nearly all of what has come from schools, for example, has come direct to us. So we've managed to establish those really good contacts with our schools. They know to come directly to us. Some of the notifications have come from Public Health England, but you're right. There are some, obviously, with everything else that's happening with PHE, there are some challenges. They are, I think, struggling with the same capacity issues that we are struggling with as well. So we continue to pick up as much as we can, but without, and I'm speaking, I'm not speaking out of turn here, because most DPAHs across the country even recognise that without that additional resource that is perhaps at tier two, so those 3,000 clinical contact races that were employed at the start devolved onto into local authority, we will not be able to do this as effectively as we should. Many places are assessing of their own contact tracing teams. That's what we've done. We've put in place a team of 12. We expect that they will pick up contact tracing as well, and we just continue to do the best that we can locally. I'm sorry, Jo, I can't really give you the answers that you want, but that is the situation we find ourselves in.
I just think that, I'm delighted that we're being honest about the situation that we're in, and we're all making the best of it wherever we stand on it. But at some point, I mean, what really, to be quite honest, I'm fed up that we, that so much money has been thrown at this, and we've all sacrificed so much. And we were, we all knew this was coming, you know, even those of us who aren't perhaps a little bit more sceptical about the impact, but again, we weren't ready. Not us. We're ready. We're picking up the slack as we always have done, but it's just so, it's so disappointing that we haven't been able to, even though we see, you know, we're trying to emulate Belgium now, it seems, by shutting everything down, which is, I guess, that's kind of the way that things should go. Because, I mean, I can't believe how many schools have already, you know, lost entire bubbles, and hopefully we can get them back quicker. But it, oh, it just is frustrating. Yeah, but thank you. I just think it needs being aired. So thank you.
Yeah, I've got another hand up, but I can't see a face or a name. Can you help me, Paul?
Chair, I think the hand's just gone down. It might have been Julie Jackson's. I'm not sure if Julie needed to speak again.
Okay. Can we move on then, Sade? Thank you very much. Move on to Duncan.
Thank you. I was just, I've got a few slides on the data and Sade's given a brief update about the data, but I was hopefully going to talk for a little bit of comparisons and just where we are in relation to some other local authorities as well. And then just to give everyone a bit of a summary about how we're using this, this data, as we've said, access to data has been one of the things that has improved over the last few months and sort of given this the capacity and the stretch in the system. It's becoming ever more vital in order to use that well so that we can target resources and target our capacity effectively. So there's been a few, a few things. I mean, you'll see within these slides when I start talking through them, there is a public-facing dashboard on the CSW website, and on that dashboard, you're able to to look up some of this data and sort of there's some interactive components as well, so that you're able to to do comparisons against other other local authority areas. The, a couple of things to say, recently, we've introduced active surveillance processes, so we know when we have problems and increasing numbers in younger people, being able to identify new cases amongst younger people when they come in and be able to inform our central response team so that they're able to follow up and do contact tracing and and sort of really start to try to be a bit more proactive there and using that data and how we how we target and contact individuals. We're doing more work around sort of setting out the geographies and the geographic distribution of cases so that we can see if there's any patterns emerging in areas where there might be increasing numbers in smaller areas below within local authorities and districts and borough county level. And also, we've been doing more in-depth analysis in response to outbreaks or situations. So, for example, where there have been exceedances and as mentioned earlier, we've produced sort of in-depth surveillance reports. More recently, data access is improving, and more recently, we've now had access to negative test results as well. And that gives us the opportunity to do things such as calculate the proportion of tests that are positive in different age groups or in different geographies. And I'm hoping that once we've got a standardised way across local authorities of of deduplicating and using and cleaning some of that data, that we'll be able to use that as well to drive to drive and target some of what we're doing. So I just, if we can move on to the next slide. So you'll see in Warwickshire, this was submitted a while ago and last week, and you'll have seen, of course, Sade gave the the updates on the Warwickshire situation. I was just going to mention where we were in terms of the different districts and borough councils, and again, it's it's sort of information that we tried to make publicly available on our Stay Safe CSW website. Rugby is the area with the highest rate per 100,000, and in the last seven days, it's had 25 new cases. And that gives us a rate of 22.95 per 100,000 over those days. North Warwickshire is the next highest on 13.8, and then Neneaton and Bedworth on 10 cases per 100,000 over the last seven days. Stratford-on-Avon and Warwick are again in the same sort of position with Stratford-on-Avon on 11 cases per 100,000 and Warwick on just over 10 cases per 100,000. So we're all roughly in the same same area with rugby, slightly higher. To compare against other other areas, I mean, if you scroll down, please, on the slides, thank you, Catherine. You'll notice we sort of submitted some information there on rates per 100,000 in some other local authorities. More recently, over the last seven days, Bolton is the area with the highest level of spread on 117 cases. So you can see that that's about 10 times higher rate than we are in Warwickshire at the moment. Bradford as well has sort of relatively high cases on 66. So again, you can see how, you know, it is a sort of slightly different magnitude to what we're seeing locally. One thing to flag, though, that, you know, is we have seen increasing numbers in other areas of the West Midlands and in some of our neighbouring local authorities. So Birmingham, for example, is at a similar rate to Bradford at around 66 cases per 100,000, and that's something that's risen over the last week and two weeks quite quite quickly. Looking across the rest of the beacon, Coventry is around the same same place as rugby. It's around 21 cases per 100,000. And Solihull has also seen a large increase over the last week. It's around 50. So I think that gives some comparison and we're able to to sort of say where we stand in relation to some of the local authorities that you might have seen in the media and might have seen on the news. And again, I'd encourage you to, I'd encourage people to, you know, who have got you know, some some time to look into it, the dashboard that we produce does allow you to select and deselect local authorities to compare against. So whenever you sort of see something on the news, you're able to compare Warwickshire's position and against that.
Okay, thanks, Duncan. Any questions for Duncan? No, great. We can move on then, and welcome, Nadia.
Thank you very much. So good afternoon. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Contain framework, which I'm sure all members will be aware of, the National Contain Framework. A little bit about how we've been planning with our emergency planning colleagues who work across Coventry, Solihull and Warwickshire for what might lie ahead. Thanks, Catherine. Next slide. So the Contain framework does a number of things, but it mainly outlines how local and and national partners will work together to try and reduce transmission of Covid in local areas. And you may have seen the weekly PHE surveillance reports. Every week they're produced, you can find them on the gov.uk website, and it shows a number of local authorities that are cut into different categories. And essentially, they're broadly categorising authorities into areas of concern, areas of enhanced support and areas of intervention. So although they don't define thresholds or figures, Duncan was just talking about the figures and the weekly rates. They essentially categorise local authorities in terms of the level of intervention that might be needed in particular areas. So when it comes to areas of concern, and I think, you know, Coventry was teetering on the edge of being in that category last week, but obviously things have moved on significantly nationally and regionally. In these particular areas, local areas are encouraged to increase testing, to really enhance their community engagement and communications work, and to do more detailed epidemiological work with with PHE to really understand the clusters and what's happening in terms of spread. I think we're doing really well on that front. We're constantly monitoring constantly monitoring where we might be exceeding, looking at clusters, etc., etc. So I think from that perspective, we are doing really well on that front. In terms of being an area of enhanced support, this is really where you may start to see areas putting in additional local restrictions and using some of the powers that I know we're going to come on to talk a little bit about as well. And then when you're an area of intervention... And then when you're an area of intervention, this is really talking about the local lockdown um, type scenario. And this, just to be clear, this is a national decision uh, uh, about when an area becomes uh, an area where you need a local lockdown, obviously working with the local area. Thank you Catherine. Just go on to the next slide. We're currently thinking through and finalising um, our kind of trigger levels for, um, for doing different things. You know, looking at, you know, care home visiting, for example, when we might want to be restricting other things. Um, and we're doing that in tandem with Coventry and Solihull. Um, but I think whatever trigger levels you use, we're really clear that, that, that you can't just use a single figure um, to say, right, at this, at this weekly rate, we will be doing X, Y, Z. It's always really a trigger for a conversation about looking at the context, you know. Um, we might have high rates, but actually is it just linked to a particular outbreak or particular um, set of circumstances? So for example, in rugby, we feel we know what's going on in that particular spike and that's a good, good position to be in. Um, whilst actually if you're getting wider household transmission, it's, it's a less comfortable place to be. And you might want to think about um, um, doing something a little bit more than you already are. So this slide really just says that um, whatever we do in terms of trigger levels and moving to um, to, to more enhanced levels of intervention, we'll be doing it in, in an intelligent way and looking at the whole picture. Thank you Catherine. And we've been working with CSW colleagues um, on making sure that we're ready for what, what comes next from the perspective of community support, supporting the most vulnerable. And I know district and borough colleagues will, will, will be, been working very closely with us on this as well. Um, looking at how we um, prevent and manage outbreaks in our high risk settings. Making sure we have enough PPE for our internal staff and care staff, because we're still providing all of our PPE for care settings in Warwickshire. And then um, thinking about how we can use powers, um, that we'll, we'll come on to talk about that a little bit later. I'm not going to talk about this now. And, and, and also as Jade has mentioned, doing a lot of work around communications and community engagement. Thanks. Next slide. Okay. So in terms of community support, and, and I'm really speaking on behalf of other colleagues here. But we know that the shielding um, programme is currently paused, but we can use it again. And a plan is being put in place for being able to stand that up um, very quickly should we need to. And we, we already have the list of clinically extremely vulnerable people and can, can contact them to advise them to take particular precautions. Have a local welfare scheme as well that supports those in crisis. And the seven day hotline phone service is, is continuing as well. There are concerns around capacity within community networks to support, to continue to support as, as they have done. Um, if demand increases and that, that's, that is a big challenge and a risk. Actually, and, and also just on this point, we know that the furlough scheme is running until October. But you know, the, the potential impact, adverse impact on communities after that is something that, you know, is of concern. Next. Lovely. Thank you. And, and really, I think just picking up on some of the points that Jade mentioned. We have got a number of work streams that, that sit under the health, health protection board. There is a care home work stream. There's a huge amount of work going on through social care colleagues. Um, ourselves working with the CCG and infection control colleagues around protecting care homes really, um, before we go into the winter. Um, education, again, an educational work stream led by um, Leanne Brooksmith. Um, lots and lots of work going into support schools to reopen safely and to be managing the cases as they come through. Um, businesses and workplaces, working with trading standards and heads of environmental services, um, very, very closely from districts and boroughs. And there is a big um, programme of work that sits around, um, both preventing COVID and also um, managing some of the risks and cases and incidents that we're having in those settings. Duncan leads on the um, work with our homeless communities. Um, and then events has been, has been another big issue that's actually picked up by the groups looking after the workplaces and businesses. So trading standards colleagues, environmental health colleagues, all involved in that, looking at risk assessments around events. I know there's quite a lot of anxiety about um, so, some of these events and whether they should or shouldn't be going ahead. And, and it is, it is a, a difficult area. And then importantly, something that was raised um, in one of our um, planning sessions, the interplay between these settings. Because we are finding links between schools and pubs or schools and workplaces, et cetera. And actually us understanding the interplay between these settings is really, really important. And we are picking things up all the time, um, which, you know, useful intelligence, which helps us manage outbreaks much better. So thank you. And I think finally, yeah, PPE, um, for those colleagues that um, are interested in this. We've been distributing, uh, well, purchasing and distributing PPE for many, many months to our care settings. And we continue to provide that currently holding a minimum of four weeks' supply. And the national drops have stopped now. Um, and so the, these, these are our own, this is our own purchase PPE. The main supply issue is now our price and, and the volume of unfortunately fraudulent and fake products on the market. And something that we're working closely with trading standards colleagues are um, on. And we're looking to try and secure supplies to at least March twenty twenty one at the moment. So that we've got that kind of contingency for, for over, over the winter period. I think that was all I was going to say.
Um, yeah. Thank, thank you Nadia. Um, any questions for Nadia? Um, Chris Bain, you've raised an issue about inquiries you're getting.
Yeah, we've been getting um, a number of inquiries about people regarding the restrictions on visiting to care homes. And in particular, um, the requirement that, that um, visits are restricted to twenty minutes, which we're hearing about uh, once a week. Uh, and those things are causing their own challenges in terms of the mental health, both of the relative and the person not being visited. I just wondered if, and the general question was uh, that people are asking is, is this a proportionate response to the risk?
Um, it's a really difficult one and it's one that does fill our inboxes as well. And I'm sure if social care colleagues were here, they would also have a view on this. But um, I think at the moment, um, we are saying that, you know, as per the national guidance for care home visiting, that ideally if visits can be done outside, they should be done outside, that will become more challenging going into the winter. Um, but otherwise care homes are doing their own risk assessments to look at how many visitors they can allow into the home setting and, and still keep it safe. And the national guidance as, as well does talk about trying to restrict to one, one constant visitor if possible per, per resident. So we are trying to keep in step with the national guidance on this and absolutely understand the kind of, the, the, the flip side of that being the, the, the needing to look at the mental wellbeing of individuals. And homes are encouraged to look at particular individuals and what may be beneficial for them in terms of their needs. But there, yes, it is, there, there are still restrictions and, and we're certainly not operating visiting as, um, as per usual, so to speak. So really understand that, 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 that point and, and very happy to sort of pick up the conversation offline. And I see if we can, if there's anything that, that can be done about it. Yeah.
Yeah, if we could pick it up offline, because the, the sort of question we're getting is what's the, the difference in risk between a one hour visit and a twenty minute visit?
Yeah, from, from my understanding, I'm not sure that we've, I, I, I will double check. I'm not sure we've restricted in terms of times. It may well be that the care homes have, have, have done their own um, risk assessments. And that's what they've, they've come up with. But I will, I will double check that for you and, and we can have that conversation, no problem. Yeah.
Thanks both. Uh, I can see another hand up, but I haven't got her name. So just chip in.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to ask.
Sorry, carry on Judith.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I think it's the end of the furlough scheme that I've got concerns about. Um, it's really going to impact a lot of, of our residents. Um, and while it's not COVID nineteen exactly, um, it is the wider health issue. Um, the mental health issue of less money coming in, child poverty, domestic violence. Uh, and I'm just, I suppose raising it as a concern that we could see all these rise um, when the furlough scheme finishes and um, um, people aren't getting, getting their money.
Yeah, to- totally agree, um, Judith. It's, it's one we need to watch. And I'm in touch with our um, um, domestic abused people uh, as well. And they are working on that, that I can, can assure you. Any, anybody else with a query?
Yes, I've got another query and it's an education one.
Carry on.
Um. Is it? I'm, I'm having read about the cases we've had so far and how schools have handled it. Have we, are we narrowing down how long a large bubble are going to be out of school? Or are we basically particularly at secondary school, looking at a hundred kids at a time?
So yeah, we, we are, and, and I think if my, my consultant lead was here, she would out tell you that she's working really heavily with schools to look at how we can reduce that from the perspective of making sure that there are seating plans. Um, you know, for children so you know where, where they have been. And it is, it is a challenge. I know that there've been, you know, a number of schools where we have seen, yeah, uh, over a hundred pupils sent at home. We, we do want to avoid that because it's really important that children are in school. Um, however, I think um, the risk assessments that were done for those particular settings um, required for the, for those, those, those children to be sent off. But certainly I know Leanne is working really hard with schools to say, look, we need to try and avoid this if we, if, if, if we can. And how can we put things in place to make sure that you're, you're only really, um, you're only really isolating those that are most at risk, absolutely. So recognised as a big issue because it was huge. Yes.
Yeah. And I mean, if there's anything, I mean, I, I'm not only a chair of governors, well, I'm a chair of a trust, but I'm a, a multi-academy trust, but I'm also involved in some of the secondary schools and have good relationships. So if there's anything in my patch that, you know, can happen via a councillor rather than, you know, the professionals, then I'm very happy to be used to do that. Cause I can probably say, you know me, I can say things that other people can't. Um, in terms of, you know, just, it's the balance, isn't it? That we're all now trying to, to pass on. And I, I, I'll echo what Judy was saying about mental health issues, particularly in kids. I mean, I, I've, I've watched some kids who I've known for a very long time develop some very weird behaviours during this. Um, including, you know, fear leading to agoraphobic behaviour. I mean, we've, we've dug most of them out, but the, in our group of friends, but shocking, I think. And we, yeah, we're going to reap god knows what after this. So the more they can be kept in school, the better for that as well. Brilliant. Thank you. I'm, I'm grateful.
Okay. Thank you very much for that then, Nadia. Um, can we move on to, to Jane, which is item three? Uh, we'll talk about where we are with communications and messaging.
Sorry, Lett. I was, um, could not unmute myself. So apologies, Chair.
You're not alone. You're not alone in that. It's amazing when councillors like talking, isn't it? They can't unmute. But hey ho.
Oh, the, okay. Um, so in terms of communication, um, lots more of the same in a, in a more sort of hard hitting fashion. Um, I'm, I think Emily, are you taking the piece on community engagement in a moment?
Yes, I am.
So I won't tread on, on Emily's toes because um, there's been a lot of work done comms wise in terms of community engagement. But um, colleagues and members will remember that I um, did a presentation in this group of the Let's Do The Right Thing For Warwickshire campaign. Um, which is completely um, able to be um, created into a bespoke campaign for a much smaller locations. And that's gone down very, very well. And we've had good take up of that for localised areas. Um, we have absolutely got capacity to do more of this. And one thing that we will be doing is um, trying to, to push some of this through towns and parishes. So encouraging them to take us up on our offer of the provision of the artwork and so on. And to a limited extent, um, some of the actual collateral that can go with it, certainly the designed collateral. So if anybody has um, any contacts or is keen to um, use the Let's Do The Right Thing um, campaign material, please do let us know. Um, we can create it for um, down to very specific geographic locations, even down to settings if, if that's desirable. And I'm really pleased. Sorry, sorry Chair.
So, um, yeah, I, I have had an inquiry, you know, from, from one of the parishes I represent, um, from a particular parish councillor. So would you actually print them? Can you print, like, you can print them off and then it'd be up to us, the ward councillor, ward um, division member to sort of deliver them out and see they put them up. Is that your thinking?
We would have an initial conversation to see what's going to best suit that particular area. Um, whether or not there's any actual materials like pull-up banners, posters and so on. Um, or whether they would like, or and if they would like perhaps some social media material where we have um, created the um, design to incorporate that particular area. So we can be really, really flexible and we have got some um, possibility. We've got um, a little bit of funding to be able to produce, as I say, some of these actual hard goods. So the pull-up banners, um, posters, flyers, that sort of thing.
So, so the particular accounts I'm thinking of, uh, and for the members' info, would we give them your name or whose name?
Yes, if you give.
I'm happy to think I can't do it, but it's easier if you talk direct, isn't it?
It, yes, it probably is much easier for us to talk direct, but um, please feel free to pass on my name. And um, we will then contact them, talk them through what their needs are, talk to them about what other people have done and what's worked particularly well for other people, recognising that each area is quite specific in dealing with different groups of people, different geographic spreads and so on. Very happy to do that.
Thank you, Jane.
Um, and just on that, I'm, I'm delighted to say that um, we've got the um, the launch of Let's Do The Right Thing For Rugby as well. Um, so, so that's going live. And in terms of more broader communications, um, comments, we um, continue to work very closely with our colleagues in public health. Um, as Duncan mentioned, the data that comes through to the public health team is then um, translated, if you like, into the sort of key points to drive the communications beyond that. Um, and this week we are seeing, as we see some of the numbers increasing, really stepping up on the communications um, and pushing our messages out, including heavier promotion in those areas where numbers are highest. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention um, is students and young people. And so we're working closely with the universities um, to create peer-to-peer um, communications that can go out from the students' union and also from the universities to students. But also from us as the local authorities, welcoming students, telling them that they're welcome here, but reminding everybody that we need to have that um, sense of responsibility and respect for the neighbourhoods within which we live. And I think Emily's probably going to cover the rest, so.
Is there any questions for um, Jane before we move on to Emily? Uh, Judith Fogg.
I just want to say thank you to Jane. Can I ask for a Let's Do It For Whitnash um, campaign? Um, we, we decided not to go for, for posters, I think, just to do it on Facebook and um, Whitnash Facebook and the town council website. Uh, and it's gone down really well. Um, you know, because it is specific just for my town. Um, I know it's very similar to all the others, but it's, it's Whitnash in it. So that goes down with, with, well, in Whitnash. So I'd really say to people, contact Jane and her team because um, you know, you can do it to small, right down to a very small um, town or, or a parish council. So thank you Jane.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
So great. Can we move on then and welcome Emily, Emily and Charles, who are going to do the uh, community engagement presentation?
Thank you. I'm trying to get hold, Marion Humphries, trying to.
Oh, carry on Marion. Yeah, I haven't got a picture, so I'm not certain who's got hands up.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, yeah, it's, uh, I'd just like to say that I will be getting in touch, Jane, because I'd love it for my area. Um, for the campaign. So I will be getting in touch because I've heard very good, very good results about your campaign. Thank you very much.
Be delighted to, to work with you. Thank you.
Thanks Marion. Okay, thanks Marion. Um, can we go to Emily and Charles? Thanks very much.
Thank you. I don't think Charles is with us today, but wanted, wanted to give him and his team real credit for the support that they're providing for this work stream. So hence the name there. Um, so as Jade mentioned, we've got a weekly working group that's come together to support community engagement with a, a range of partners from statutory sector through to community organisations as well. Um, if we go on to the first slide or the next slide, please Catherine. So just as a bit of a, a summary, one of our key pieces of work at the moment is that we've made available small grants to community organisations. So um, they can apply for up to a thousand pounds um, to help us with the engagement with some of those groups that perhaps we aren't as good as engaging with and actually they've got really good connections with. Um, so we're, we're doing this as a rolling programme. So you'll see there that the initial deadline was the first of September. We've extended it for another month and this will likely roll on for um, a few months now as we kind of, with our ambition is to be really flexible to those priorities that are emerging. Um, so the first round, we've had a lovely application. So the first round, we've had a lovely application from Warwickshire Carver, building on their Connect Well scheme in rugby. So rugby being a current priority area, we're progressing and supporting that. And they'll be particularly engaging with people who have long-term conditions. So those that they would see as part of their social prescribing scheme and make sure they're both providing appropriate and accurate information about coronavirus intestine trace, but also they've got a standard set of questions they'll be asking their patients in terms of gaining some of that feedback about what's their understanding or any misconceptions that they have at the moment, which will help us further develop our communications as we go forward. We've also had a couple of activities with Equip, one that wasn't part of this grants round particularly, but they've produced a whole range of videos from community leaders giving messages about coronavirus symptoms, how to stay safe and how to get tested in their own language, which we've had some really good feedback about already. So that's really positive. Couple more proposals in the pipeline. And at the moment we are targeting a push on the grants that are available, particularly with those that may be working with young people to help us really shape some of those messages and get some really impactful messages out there and potentially create these creative ways that we're really trying with our local young people. So really pleased to have that available. And, you know, if you've got community organisations that you think of that are particularly working with some of those vulnerable groups that we've listed there, do encourage them to get in touch. So they can contact dphadmin@warwickshire.gov.uk for more information. And it's very much a supportive process. So if we get a proposal in and we think it needs some strengthening, we will work alongside the community group to help shape that further. So we can get, you know, most maximum value out of that. Onto the next slide, please. I wanted to just feed back around the webinars. So we did three place-based webinars in July, which a number of colleagues on the call today were part of. So I just wanted to recognise and thank you for being part of that. We've had over 120 attendees. Plus the webinars are available on our Stay Safe website for people to view at their leisure. But we've had really good feedback. People really saying, you know, it helps them to understand where we're at currently within Warwickshire and what some of those key messages are around isolation periods and getting tested. So thank you. One of the things we're doing almost as a build on some of that initial engagement, if we go to the next slide, is developing an active citizenship programme, the third bullet point there, which will run initially in Nuneaton and Bedworth. So it will be a series of five or six, I think it is, evening webinars over a three-week period in September, October, targeted at local residents to create community champions around coronavirus. So to skill them up, get them really confident in what the key messages are. And we'll be looking at not just coronavirus intestine trace, but some of the wider health promotion messages as well, including vaccinations and the benefits of that, and trying to understand some potential barriers within local communities to taking up vaccinations, be that the standard vaccination programme or the coronavirus vaccine, if and when, when it comes out. So I think that will be really positive. And as I say, starting in Eton and Bedworth, if it works well, we'll roll that out into other areas. We're scoping at the moment additional channels to reach priority groups. So Charles and his team are working with food banks to see how we can build on their engagement with local communities. And yes, his team have been out there getting, just getting posters up in priority locations to help promote the Let's Do The Right Thing For Warwickshire campaign and target local populations. So I'm really excited by the work that's going on. We're looking as well around how we can build on the, the social movement around the Black Lives Matter campaign. Sade did a, a evening presentation with a group of activists that Equip have got links with, which was really positive again around COVID and health inequalities. And we'd like to further build on that because we recognise that's a movement that particularly with our young people has really inspired them to act. So we think there's some traction we can gain there really in building on, building some coronavirus prevention messages off the back of that and using some of those, the community advocates that have been created through that movement. So yeah, lots going on. As I say, meeting weekly, trying to remain really flexible so that we can respond to the key priorities as they change. And hopefully you'll start seeing some of the outputs of this activity in your local communities too. I think that was it, so.
Thank you. A couple of points, Emily. One, I'm delighted to see we've launched a community champions network because I've been very keen in that for some, some, some time. Having looked at another one of the London Boroughs, Boroughs models. So I hope we get a good, good response to that. I've certainly telling all my parish councils. I don't think it has been sent out direct to all our parish councils. The, I know it was on, you know, on a general distribution, but hasn't been done individually to our parish councils. I'm certainly passing it on, sent it on to mine. But that may be something for rural members to insert in all the parish because I mean, that would be critical if we could get some good community champions in our rural parishes. And the other things, are we engaging with the youth parliament?
Yeah. So we've, Lisa was just this week, I think, recognised that they will be a key stakeholder to link with. So she was going to reach out to them this week. Something I didn't mention is the group are being provided with a weekly resource pack and some guidance that goes along with that around key messages for them to promote through their local channels, be that social media or community networks. So we've started, we've been doing that for a couple of weeks now. And one of the key messages that we're trying to get out at the moment is promotion of our local Warwickshire Council Survey that we're using to explore people's experiences of the pandemic, the prevention measures, and of course their feelings about the near future as well. So I would be really grateful if colleagues on the call today could help us with promoting that. And I'm just popping a link into the chat. So you've got a link to the survey. We've had over 1,700 responses already. Planning to keep it open till the end of September, but we may extend if we, you know, haven't got quite the responses we need, aiming for at least 2,000. Couple of key stats I'll give you actually from interim results to date, which a couple are really positive. So over 95% of respondents have said they're quite clear about what the symptoms of coronavirus are. And around 94% said they know what to do if they get such symptoms in terms of isolating. However, around 28% of respondents so far have said they're unsure about how to get a test. And 14% have indicated that they're not confident they would be able to isolate if they had symptoms or were asked to isolate due to being a contact of a symptomatic case, which is something that's quite concerning and perhaps touching on the risk that we recognise around people in insecure employment, zero hours contracts, et cetera, who, you know, would lose quite a significant amount of income if they didn't work for two weeks. So something that we need to get our heads around collectively on that one.
I've got a question from JB. So if you'd like to go ahead.
That'd be me.
Go again.
I think, sorry, I think you hit pretty much everything I was going to say, Les, about the rural areas. We have, it hasn't been anything in particular and my, my very, very teeny weeny rural bits. They're not too worried about it. But anecdotally, I went to a parish council meeting last night where we all sat far enough away from each other and everybody wore masks. And they're actually taking it, they seem to be taking it really seriously because most of them are older. The active, but the active citizenship programme, I think if we could do something that rolls all that stuff out to all our parish councils. I mean, you know, I personally have got 17. I don't see them all every month. I can, I can send stuff through, but it's much, I don't know, I don't know whether it has as much clout coming from me or if it comes, if it comes direct actually, whether they take it more seriously, to be honest. And that's the only comment I've made. It would be, I think, particularly with the slightly harder messaging coming, most of them behaving well. But then we're looking, you know, we've, we have a lot of kids that get transported miles around the place. So, and we, we probably don't have as many multi-generational families, but there's, so the messaging is different. But hopefully the localities team will sort of link up all the little local groups we've got, which, many of which, of course, we established during the worst of the pandemic. So there is, there are teams to use if we need them.
Absolutely, yeah. They're still maintaining networks with all those COVID-19 support groups. But I'll have a chat with Charles after this around what more we could do for rural communities as well. Thank you.
Marion.
Thanks, Rem. I was just, sorry, I was trying to unmute.
That's fine.
One of the things I'm trying to do, because I'm very rural, is to look up all the information we get. And trying, I've been trying to get the parish councils to actually put notices in their parish council boards. So as we can swap and chop what's going on around, because not everybody is on social media. So, and they always have the boards near the local shops. So I'm trying to get that sort of thing going. And everything I get, although it goes to all the parish, all the borough councillors, I send it again out to all the borough councillors. And I've actually said that if we get posters, I'll deliver around to all the parish councils to actually get them up in the board. So as we've got that display going on as well. And I think the visual side is what we actually need as well as the social media side going on.
That's a really good point. We've fallen back quite a lot on the digital, given we're all working, working remotely at the moment. So yeah, we'll look at what more we could do. I know that Jane's team have been working hard to get those posters and banners out for the Let's Do The Right Thing For Warwickshire campaign. I'm immediately thinking of some of the images that have been created to summarise some of the social distancing guidance. And perhaps those are something we could look at making available as posters for some of those notice boards as well. So we'll have a think on that and I'll pick that up with Jane.
Okay. What, one other issue, Emily, that's been brought to my attention is that the elderly that are socially isolated and of nobody going, they're independent, shall we say. So they've probably got something dropping their shopping in, they're not necessarily having meals, meals on wheels. And that's another issue, how we are using our appetito and our meals on wheels to get to rural isolation. How we can get to those people or give them the confidence to start, become more engaged because they are becoming, you know, there's a risk of serious isolation. They don't want to go out because they're worried about it. But they're not naturally probably people that join in.
Yeah, thank you. It's a difficult one, isn't it? Because for so many months we've been telling them to stay home as much as you can and, you know, do be concerned about what's out there. And actually, we need to kind of reel back on some of that to try and give people the confidence to at least have a little walk outside every now and then and have some social contact or else, yeah, you're right, this could become quite entrenched behaviour and negative impacts of that.
Yeah, the mental health side is particularly concerning, but I suppose it's how we identify them is the issue.
Yeah. I mean, we know people that were on our shielded list. So perhaps there's something we can do off the back of that. We do have GDPR restraints in terms of how we can do, use that data beyond direct COVID-19 response. But we'll have a think about that one. I like the idea of piggybacking on some of the schemes like Appetito.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Marion, you wanted to come back.
Just to say that I think a lot of it is to do with our local volunteers. They've been working really hard with people. I mean, only today I, I myself have been providing a gentleman with meals for the whole of the lockdown time. And I've still carried on doing it because he didn't want anybody involved with him at all. But he has decided that he's going for the odd walk and he himself is, has started to come out of his shell, if you like. But he's on, he's on our list as volunteers. And I think if you ask the volunteers, they are actually starting to take people that they know have been isolated for a walk around the local green. Or they're taking them to the local shops. And I think that's the way we've got to take it is, is the volunteers in, especially in the areas where I've been involved, are the ones that know the ladies and the gentlemen that haven't been out and feel very uncertain about going out, certainly not wanting to do bus routes and that sort of thing. But they are walking to the local shops. And I think it's our volunteers that we've got to plug into at the moment.
Yeah, thanks, Marion. That's excellent. Emily, do you want to comment on that?
Just to say thanks for everything you're doing, Marion. Yeah, the volunteer response has been absolutely amazing. And I'm sure there's probably more stories we can capture similar to your own. Yeah. So again, through localities, I know they're maintaining those links and perhaps there's more that we could do around advice to encourage people, volunteers to encourage people to come out.
What's, what's our contact with GPs helping, you know, in, in areas where they may know where some of these isolated people are because they may be having contact with them more or whatever.
Yeah.
Putting posters and stuff.
Yeah, our GP practices did a lot again through the initial response through their social prescribers to ensure that their vulnerable and shielded patients had some contact. I know our, many of our commissioned services, we're continuing to do weekly kind of welfare calls with individuals. So Alzheimer's Society, Carers UK, sorry, Carers Trust have all been doing weekly calls. The Rugby Connect Well Scheme have also been doing weekly befriending calls and they've made that available across Warwickshire now as well. So this is making me think, talking this through, we probably need to pull all of this together into a bit of an information sheet to share with you all.
Yeah, that would be good. And certainly see every member gets it. And then we can make certain that we, we get that out and about, particularly in our rural areas as well. And to all members, that would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Emily? In which case, thank you very much, Emily. And can we move on to Nicola, who's going to talk about local authority powers? Floor is yours, Nicola.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody. I'll try not to sound too much like a lawyer. So if there's anything that people want to ask, please do chip in as we go along. Could you put the next slide up, Catherine, for me? It's worth saying at the beginning that the powers that local authorities have are spread out over quite a few different pieces of legislation. Some of which are sort of coronavirus specific and some of which are the wider public health powers. So talking to Nadia, we're concentrating on the, the COVID-related powers in the main, but we'll, we'll touch on some of the others as we go through. So the, the main piece of legislation that has the powers that, that we will be looking to use when, when circumstances arise, is the snappily titled Health Protection Coronavirus Restrictions, England Number Three Regulations 2020, because we're already on our third set of regulations. These came into force on the 18th of July and currently are stated to expire at the end of the 17th of January 2021. And these are the regulations that can be exercised by upper-tier local authorities along with unitaries and districts in single-tier areas. So these are the ones that have the powers that we were touching on in sort of earlier discussions around restricting access to premises, closing premises, prohibiting events from taking place and restricting access to, to public outdoor spaces. There are a few of the regulations that I'll come on to touch on in a minute in a bit more detail. But it's worth saying that there is a threshold criteria under these regulations that have to be satisfied before you can take the next step of issuing a direction. So the proposed directions need to respond to a serious and imminent threat to public health in the area. The Secretary of State did declare a serious and imminent threat to public health nationally, of course, with COVID. So this is about saying you need, you need to have that COVID reason within your area. The direction needs to be necessary to prevent, protect against, control or provide a public health response. Or, and the prohibition requirement or restriction needs to be proportionate. And I think that's the point we were, we were touching on earlier. And could you put the next slide up for me, please, Catherine? These regulations have come, been issued by the Secretary of State under his powers that tie into the Public Health Control of Disease Act 1984, which is a sort of wider act under which public health have a number of, of powers. But these specific regulations, Regulation Four relates to individual premises. And this is the, the regulation that would allow a local authority to either close, restrict entry to premises or secure restrictions in relation to the location of persons in the premises. So this is about sort of lockdown activity. It doesn't apply to It doesn't apply to any premises that form part of essential infrastructure. So it can't be used, for example, to close government buildings or to prevent public transport operating. And as will be, you'll see will be the case with all of these regulations, um the local authority has to take reasonable steps before issuing to give advance notice to owners or occupiers or businesses that are operating from those premises. Um, there are specific notices that need to be given, that need to contain particular information. And there's been a lot of work done um across CSW um with colleagues in legal and public health. And there is a toolkit um that has been sort of worked on and put together that contains templates and, and guidance on all of these for, for colleagues to use. Um, if you could run on one, please, Catherine. Regulation five uh relates to events um and the prohibition of either a specific event or a type of event taking place. Now, you need to have satisfied the threshold criteria I mentioned earlier. Um, but also you might look at the number of expected attendees and say, you know, is this the sort of event that's going to have lots of people in close proximity and therefore brings a high risk of transmission? The regulation only allows prohibitions or restrictions to be imposed either on the owner or occupier of the premises or the organizer of the event. So it doesn't give local authorities power to um take action against attendees or prospective attendees of that event. And again, you must take reasonable steps to give the relevant notice um in advance of issuing the direction. If we move on to Regulation Six, relates to open public places and this would include things like country parks or, or other sort of, you know, public um outdoor venues. Um, the provision allows you to close or restrict access to a public outdoor space where the threshold criteria are met. And as we'll see when we come on to, to enforcement, it also allows um designated officers or the police to move people on um from those areas if they're there without a reasonable excuse. And there are a list of reasonable excuses within the legislation. So it might be reasonably necessary for someone to enter for work purposes. You might close a country park, but somebody has to go in and um sort of mow the grass or look after the trees. If, if they're providing freight or haulage, if they're there to do maintenance or repair works for a utility company or repair and maintenance of highways. So it's quite a limited set of reasonable excuses that someone uh might have for being in such a place. Um, could you move us on, Catherine? Thank you. Now, obviously, these are quite um sort of impactful on owners and, and operators of businesses and um and spaces that, that might be affected by a direction. So there is an appeals process within the regulations. Anyone who is directly impacted by a direction, so you know, I, I would suggest that that would be limited to somebody um against whom the direction um has been made, has the right of appeal to a local magistrate um and to make representations to the Secretary of State, which they can do via NHS test and trace. Um, as with most sort of um regulations that impose um a prohibition or an activity on somebody, they are expected to continue to comply with the direction that has been issued until their appeal is resolved. So somebody can't lodge an appeal and then continue with their event. They have to comply with that direction until the magistrate or the Secretary of State has, has um contradicted it. Uh, if you could move us on, Catherine? The um, I suppose the interesting question for people is who can do these things? Um, the regulations allow for a local authority's designated officer, a police officer or a PCSO who reasonably believes someone to be contravening a direction to take necessary and proportionate action to enforce it. Um, we have a list of uh sort of designated officers as, as a local authorities, sort of pursuant to um decisions that have been made during uh the pandemic. And obviously, those powers, sort of police officers and PCSOs are fairly self-explanatory. Um, in terms of necessary and proportionate action, they have the power to issue a prohibition notice to somebody who contravenes a direction. So if somebody refuses to close their business, having been told to do so. And the police can direct events to stop. And they actually have a power to direct people to leave or to remove them. Um, but that is a power that sits with the police. Um, police can also uh move on um people from public outdoor spaces that have been closed or had access restricted if they don't have one of those reasonable excuses. Uh, Julie, did you have a question on that bit particularly before we move on?
Yes, if I could, uh, thank you. It's really, I understand these powers. But do we and do the police have the resources to actually make them become a reality?
Um, I think that, that's, that's a very good question. I'm not sure it's one I've got the answer to really, um, as, as sort of um council solicitor. We do have a list of um officers who have been designated to undertake um enforcement action. Um, that is looked at um and, and sort of, you know, expanded as it needs to be, but it incorporates public health colleagues and, and sort of, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Nadia, but I think it also includes uh trading sort of standards and enforcement officers in that area. So we're using people with the relevant skill sets to bolster. Um, where we might not sort of have people who've been employed, you know, directly for that purpose. Um, in terms of the police and, and the PCSOs, I think that the obviously they are, you know, they're doing it in accordance with their, their usual um operational requirements. Um. We've heard sort of today that there will be changes to the uh, the rules around sort of how many people can meet in particular places. Um, and I think those are designed to make these things a little bit easier to enforce as well. Um, it's probably worth saying on, on that point that um these regulations and the legislative sort of guidance that sits around it all changes quite frequently, as you might expect, as, as the sort of the restrictions are tightened and loosened. So um it's, it's definitely worth looking at them in the round, sort of before taking a decision and, and sort of that's how we've been approaching it with, with public health colleagues, you know, to make sure that we're all entirely up to date as, as we take those actions. So I'm sorry, that's not a particularly helpful answer, I don't think, Julie, but um.
Nicola, I mean, you, you talk about, about which, which is the county maz as the senior authority. What, what about um allow environmental health officers, for example, within our districts? Uh, are they included or would we be in a position to help them do some of this? Because that gives then our bosun district a, a more local um engagement with the public is there's problems. And we certainly use the EHOs for the roles, don't we?
We do. Um, the as it stands, these powers can be exercised by upper tier local authorities. So that would be county level
Yeah.
uh, unitary and district. Um, I don't know the answer, uh Chair, as to sort of how far we've been sort of borrowing people and.
Yeah, I can come in there.
Whether we should designate EHOs, for example.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Chair, we would never do anything um of this nature without involving heads of environmental services at um the districts and boroughs. They would be very much part of this. Um, even if we hold the powers, actually. Um, we would be doing this, we would be doing this, this jointly with them. So at the moment, we've got a number of um individuals in a, a central team of environmental health background that are working very closely with districts and boroughs and visiting premises, et cetera. So in terms of who serves the prohibition notice, it would be us, but actually we're working very closely with districts and boroughs because they've got um very good relationships with a lot of these um businesses, so.
That's what I was thinking. They could bring, you know, bring stuff to our attention that we.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, thanks for that, Nadia. Very useful.
And additional bodies, of course, as well. Um, if you could, could you move us on one, Catherine? Um, just, just to clarify what sort of um the position is if, if someone were to um to contravene a direction. It is an offence under the regulations if somebody either contravenes a direction that relates to premises or a direction relating to holding an event. So if someone were to not close their business or to continue um promoting event, that would be an offence. Um, and he, if that person is the owner, occupier or person responsible for land um in terms of public outdoor space and they fail to take reasonable steps to restrict access. It's also an offence to obstruct a person carrying out a function under these regulations. Um, and to also to enter or remain on a public outdoor space once uh a direction has been issued. So proceedings, again, can be brought either by the local authority, by the Crown Prosecution Service or anyone else designated by the Secretary of State at any particular time. Um, you'll see here that it's uh the, the process for fixed penalty notices and sort of offences relating to persons aged over eighteen. Um, then a local authority designated officer, police officer or PCSO, depending on the particular offence in question, um can issue a fixed penalty notice. Um, if that's paid within twenty eight days, then no proceedings are taken. It's a hundred pounds for a first offence. Um, and as you'll probably have read elsewhere, it doubles upon further offences until you hit a maximum of, of three thousand two hundred pounds. Obviously, um, that only relates to persons aged over eighteen. Um, if a person is under eighteen, then sort of an adult in control of that child is expected to ensure that they uh follow the direction. Could you move us on, Catherine? Um, the other piece of legislation uh which, which ties into all of this is the actual Coronavirus Act twenty twenty, which is the, the, the big piece of legislation that came out um at the commencement of, of the pandemic. This contains sections and, and a schedule that deals with the powers of public health officers, immigration officers and the police in relation to potentially infectious people. So this is the um, the sort of the most restrictive part about individuals rather than premises and events. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the Secretary of State uh sort of did um issue a notice that um coronavirus constituted a serious risk of public health and therefore we are in what is known as a transmission control period. And that's important because within that period, if a public health officer, and there's a specific definition of public health officer, uh which relates to consultants in public health, only if they're specifically designated as such by the Secretary of State. Um, now that that doesn't include um public health colleagues at a local level at the moment. So this, these are powers that sort of ultimately will be exercised sort of centrally or, or by the police or, or um immigration officers. Those persons are able to uh direct to some, somebody to go to a screening centre for a test, they can remove a person to a place suitable for screening. Or they can request a constable to remove the person to a place suitable for, for screening if they're uncooperative. Those powers are obviously quite um sort of uh, sort of stringent and therefore only exercisable if it's necessary and proportionate to do so, either in the interest of the person that you're removing or for the protection of other people or for the maintenance of public health. Because the, you know, they do impose um quite a restriction on people's individual uh liberties potentially, um if not exercised appropriately. Could you move us on, Catherine? There are also other powers in the Coronavirus Act sort of that follow on from people who have already been tested. So if somebody has been screened and uh is infected with coronavirus or receives an inconclusive result, or if a public health officer had reasonable grounds to believe that they were still infectious, um regardless of that result, this is where the power to quarantine or to insist that people quarantine uh comes from for up to fourteen days. Um, and also to impose restrictions on, on movement and travel, whether that's inside the UK or outside. Um, again, if you, if somebody is required to remain in isolation, then that requirement can be enforced by a constable or a public health officer um rather than uh, rather than anybody else. And if a person were to abscond from their isolation, having been, having been put there, then uh they can be taken into custody and returned to an appropriate place by a police officer. Could you just move us along one, Catherine? As you might expect, it, it is an offence um under the Act to fail to comply with a direction um or instruction, to fail to comply um if you are a person who has responsibility for a child and a direction is made in respect of that child. Um, to abscond or attempt to abscond um while being removed and to knowingly or uh mis, provide false or misleading information. So if somebody were to um, you know, put down incorrect personal details um as part of test and trace, that, that technically would be an offence as well. Um, I think that's probably the end of my slides, but I wanted to just sort of flag that there are some other powers that exist um anyway, sort of regardless of the coronavirus legislation. I mentioned the Public Health Control of Disease Act previously. Um, and this is sort of gives general um powers to, to public health to manage people who might cause significant harm to human health as a result of sort of infection uh or contamination. So we do have other powers that are specifically tied to coronavirus. Um, but they are uh more time consuming. They require applications to magistrates for an order. There is uh quite um a sort of stringent evidence gathering process, including reports on symptoms and diagnosis. So the purpose of the coronavirus um specific legislation was to sort of cut through that and say, if you know somebody's got coronavirus um and that has already been declared, uh sort of we were in pandemic situation, then the things that need to be done in advance of issuing directions are, are much less um time consuming and, and enable a better response to the pandemic. Um, is there anything, any other questions, anything I can help people with? And hopefully I've not sounded like a set of terms and conditions.
No, thank you, Nicola. That was, that was really uh really helpful. And any, any questions for Nicola, anyone?
As I say, it's worth keeping on top of the guidance as well as remembering the powers because the guidance can change sometimes quicker than we see. Um, sort of anything else change, so it is worth keeping on top of it.
Thank you. Jo?
Um, yeah, the guidance slash legislation keeps changing and I think that the the government is spectacularly unclear as to what is guidance, what is legislation? And um what, what can actually be done? So I'm grateful that you've given us that whistle stop tour around it. But it seems to me, um, you failed to use the word draconian, but I think that's the word I would use for some of this. Um, and I have, I have seen some of this being misused because um because our, particularly the police who are largely the ones who seem to be exercising the powers um are so pressed, there aren't really enough of them to do the job when people are, you know, clear. For instance, the example I'd give would be looking at them trying to clear people out in Manchester. And it just wasn't working because, so the link between our messaging and the legislation and actually getting the wording right, I think is key to this. Because even as a lawyer myself, I have to check back all the time to see whether it was a statutory instrument, whether it was a regulation, you know, how it was actually applied and who has what power. And so most of the time, there's no power. But what Les says about um the power being potentially passed on to district councils, um is there anything in the Act to allow?
I think that, yeah, the point is, I think as Nadia said, we would maintain the power and we would issue the notices and make sure that all the steps have been followed. We're using sort of district colleagues to assist with identifying these things and sort of to have bodies on the ground to, um, you know, to make things happen. But the actual sort of legal power rests either with us or the police, or um if we're, if it was a single tier authority, it would rest at unitary level.
So it does, so there is no opportunity for it to be delegated down?
Not that I have found yet, but I'm quite happy.
The only reason I'd like to do that is because I'm watching bureaucracy in action on a daily basis. And um, you know, the more of the crap that we can cut, the better. Um, and it's, so if that power is in there and you could dig it out,
Mm-hmm.
Um, then, you know, I, I'm looking at Shade who's trying not to grin at me, but.
You know, Jo.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I mean.
Have a look. Um, I think I think it's important, as you say, given the nature of these restrictions, that the powers are exercised properly. And that's where those threshold levels come in. And I say that there's been quite a lot of really detailed work done with colleagues across CSW to come up with a toolkit that has, you know, flow charts and appropriate sort of guidance on everything.
Yeah, I mean, having seen that, I'd 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 absolutely agree with that. What we're looking at is fine, but then what you see expressed sometimes on the street isn't exactly what we would like to see.
And Manchester and Leicester and things like that had had a slightly different position because once you get into the realms that Nadia was talking about of national intervention, so once you hit that really top level of authority in need of help um and and intervention, the government steps in and you'll see individual orders in relation to individual places, which is why Leicester had its own statutory instrument sort of setting out the postcode areas that were then subject to lockdown, different to everybody else.
Presumably then the stat, sorry, I'm not going to ask any more questions on statutory instruments after this one, I promise. But presumably, um the statutory instrument will only be the very brief bit, which will be the postcodes, et cetera. And that'll just be appended to.
It uh, yeah, if you if you look at Leicester, it's it's basically.
Go and have a look at.
Yeah, it basically. Replicates everything and says, except for these bits, which, you know, we've limited and here are the places. So but I can I can take it out and send it over to you if that's.
No, no, I will look for it. It's all right. You know, you can tell I haven't, yeah, I haven't had this as my bedtime reading yet. Probably.
But I'm sure um you and Nicola could re- respond if you sort it out, but we don't really want to put Stratford in lockdown so you can have a play with it.
I want to keep Stratford out of lockdown.
Okay, that that covers our agenda. Thank you, Nicola. Um, any um questions left from from um from the from the group? Uh, in which case, um I'll close uh this part of the meeting and thank our presenters very much and Catherine for running the projector. Um, it's really been very, very useful. Um, Paul, do we we stay where we are and you will ensure that everybody else has gone?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, if we could just ask all members of the board to stay on the call for now. Carl, if you would kill the live feed, please.